Would someone like to move approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, I'm in favor of this evening's agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None. That brings us to recognition of student staff in public and I'd like to invite Superintendent Mark Suzyk to come forward. He's from Intermediate School District 917. The school district is fortunate to have businesses and organizations supporting our learners and community of Bloomington. Intermediate School District 917 is a friend of Bloomington Public Schools. We welcome Superintendent Mark Suzyk to say a few words about our partnership.
Well, that is very well said. We are an important partner with Bloomington and Bloomington's a very important part of what we do. Again, my name is Mark Suzyk, I'm the superintendent of 917. Just a little bit of context about me transitioning to this job, I've been in it now for 18 months. And for years and years and years as a building level principal, I would say that 917 is part of our district because I was in another one of the member districts. And I would say that they are part of our district, we provide, 917 provides one end of the continuum of services that your families and children need. At the same time, throughout the entire process, each of our member districts, Bloomington for instance, stays part of the program. We work closely with our school partners. Superintendents meet each month, the special ed directors meet each month, and we do predominantly three things. Our biggest book of business are federal setting for special ed programs, so they are programs for students that require a high degree of assistance to be successful in school. The second biggest thing that we do is we facilitate our career technical program. Bloomington presently has 44 kids coming down to DCTC each day in our technical programs, in our career technical programs, like for instance, trades in construction, heavy duty trucking, total autos, the culinary programs, the medical program. And that's a great partnership. Your students come to us at the end of the day and then they head back up to Bloomington to depart for the day. We also have our area learning centers. And because you've got a successful area learning center, not very many of your students use those services that we provide. We have four of your students presently being served in our area learning centers. And I also thought that it'd be helpful just to briefly talk about the number of kids that we have in different programs. For instance, now these are all of our special needs programs. In our TESSA program, which is a huge celebration for us this year, we've got 25 kids from Bloomington in our TESSA program. And TESSA is our transition program. You operated a transition program separate from ours for a long while, and this year, I'm very happy to say that we've joined in partnership with your district to provide programming at the Bloomington Transition Center. It's up and running, it's a fabulous program. I'm really proud of the work that we've done together. I want to thank Les Fujitaki and Rod Zivkovich and Jennifer McIntyre. They came to us in the fall of last year and said, "Is it possible for 917 to take over a portion of our transition programming?" And so we worked throughout the school year last year to get to the point that we are now, and it's been hugely successful. We have a couple of programs for students that are struggling with their behavior. These are students with emotional behavioral disorders. One is called IDEA, another one is called CASE. Collectively in those two programs, we serve 15 students from Bloomington Public Schools. We serve four students with significant deaf, hard of hearing services, which means that they are taught in a program that is inside of a regular day school, but they provide direct instruction both through auditory channels and in assistive technology to make sure that they can access their curriculum. We have one student in a program for students with multiple handicapping conditions, our DASH program, from Bloomington. We have 14 students presently being served in SUN programs, and SUN stands for Students with Unique Needs. And the students with unique needs are students that have autism spectrum disorder. And last but not least, we have six Bloomington students in our T program, and T stands for therapeutic education alternative. And so all of the kids that attend our programming in the T program are in a classroom where there is a teacher for the whole day, and there's also a mental health practitioner for the whole day, providing support to the students that need help, in addition sometimes to multiple paraprofessionals. Remember that we're an important part of Bloomington Public Schools, and Bloomington Public Schools is an important part of what we do. And one of the things that you have when you're a member district is you have representation on our board. And I cannot thank you enough for the representation that you've provided us. In the last five, for the last five years, Director Dick Bergstrom has been a member on our school board as well. And so I'm happy to be here tonight as we approach the end of the time that he'll be serving on our school board, and be here to publicly thank him. Couple of the things that Dick has done, he's probably forgotten about, but I'll bring them up. So he's been on our board for six years, and for five of the years, he served on the insurance committee. One of the things that was really helpful is that Dick was on our insurance committee when we transitioned to be a self-insured group, and he had that background. So that was helpful. He also was our representative on the TIES, and then it changed later to Sourcewell. And he was, I will say, he was actually the person that was in the room voting on behalf of 917 on the day that the vote was taken, so he ended up at the right meeting at the right time. And those are the former roles he served. Some of the things I just want to, Dick, I want to thank you for. Number one, you take the time and make the time to get out in our community, and knowing the effort that you've put into that, I can only assume that you've done the same thing in Bloomington Public Schools. As you know, Director Bergstrom shows up when he gets an invite. And other times, whenever there's an event at school, he shows up and comes down for our luncheons at DCTC, or goes to graduations at multiple sites around our district. You've probably also become very well aware that he is fiscally conservative, and he asks great questions. We heard one of those tonight. Very relationally capable, and I will say that of all of the hundreds of people I know, I would put Dick in the top 5% at having this one human quality, and that is, when you are in his presence and you are in conversation with him, he is fully present with you. You know that you have all of his attention. So I deeply appreciate that. And the last thing I want to say, Dick, is that I am deeply grateful for the professional mentorship that you've provided me as I've transitioned into this job, and helped me to keep first things first. So, Madam Chairperson, members of the board, I'm open or available for any questions now or in the future, but my first point of order was to say, thank you for letting us partnership, partner with you, and thank you, Dick, for your service.
Thank you for your words. Anyone have any questions for Superintendent?
Who's going to want to sit in my spot and work with Mark? It's a great, it's a great opportunity.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. We will now hear our student reports. Who wants to go first? Shontae?
All right, first of all, I want to start off with our debate team. Oh, wait, what? Oh, sorry, guys, sorry. First of all, hi, I'm Shontae Brown, I'm student rep at Jefferson. I would like to start off talking about Jefferson's debate team. Luke Ludden won on his four AA section win in congressional debate, which is something great. Jefferson's food drive also kicks off this week, this week and next week, where we'll take non-perishable items, as well as monetary donations that will all go to VEEP. And just this past weekend, I got the opportunity to go over to see the holiday show at Kennedy, and as always, great performance by them. And I like to take any chance I can get to go see them and anything they put on, because it's always a great time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ally Starks, I'm Kennedy's representative to the school board. And as Kennedy's representative, it's my privilege to represent Kennedy, but it's also my duty to represent our diverse and our underrepresented groups, which include our low income and our students of color. And with that, I'd like to bring to the board how, when examining the right sizing of the budget, how it disproportionately affects our minorities and our low income students. With some of the options, including reductions in our staffing and our core classes in Valleyview and Oak Grove, how those are feeder schools to Kennedy, but how some of those options aren't the same for Olson. I understand they're based on enrollment and those numbers, but we also need to take into consideration what those numbers represent. They represent our students who go into Kennedy, which are historically more diverse and lower income than our Olson students and our Jefferson students. That is hurting our students that are going into Kennedy and hurting our students that are at risk in our vulnerable communities, because it goes beyond enrollment, it goes beyond numbers, because those students are real, and those students are who it is my job to represent. And speaking on their behalf, we need to go beyond enrollment numbers, and we need to go beyond what that means into what that means for our students and for our high schools, and what athletics means for our high schools, what athletics means for those students that are going into Kennedy and who are going to graduate from our schools. Because it means a lot more than taking away from busing to and from away activities when students with low income or their parents don't have a car that they can just give to their children to go to St. Louis Park for a volleyball game. Because that's a real problem, and it disproportionately affects Kennedy students from Jefferson students. So when examining this budget and making that final decision on January 13th, I'd like the board to understand really how it's affecting our students, and how it's affecting the people that those numbers are representing. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to our recognition of public, at which time we have three people that have signed in to speak at this evening's meeting. We take public comment from Bloomington residents, parents, staff and students, but we only want to hear the people that have signed up. So those speakers will be limited to three minutes each. And any who don't have a chance to speak tonight are welcome to address the board via email or at a future school board study session. Each speaker should properly identify themselves with their name and address, and if you are an employee, just to maintain some order here. The rights of employees are protected, and therefore comments regarding the reputation of any people connected to the district will not be heard while the board is sitting in a public session. As a matter of general practice, the board takes questions and comments under advisement, and issues can be responded to after our deliberation. So administration has provided responses to people who have already called or emailed the district, and others regarding the topics are likely to be shared during this public comment time. So I'd like to invite Derek Zobel to the podium.
Madam Chairperson, members of the board, thank you for taking the time to serve on the board, and the responses I have gotten, my concern, first of all, Derek Zobel, I live over on Harrison Row at 8617, right over by the big marsh, Dryard. You know, when I first heard about this right sizing the budget, it was about a week ago Monday. I work in publishing that serves school libraries and public libraries, and it's a national trend of the downsizing of the media center. So it's something I'm passionate about and care about. I think the question we started and the responses from parents got some response, which I didn't think before. I had a nice conversation with Mr. Kaufman, Mr. Wisey last week, filled in some gaps. The website went live and addressed some issues. I've emailed you all with my comments and thoughts on the importance of that role in that school, not just a specialist or someone who has a certificate, but someone who is trained and has a master's degree in library information science, who can oversee the entire media center. It's not just checking out books, I'm sure you're all aware, but I liken it to going to a hospital, and is it just head count, is it somebody who can work there? If I'm going to have surgery, I don't want it to be a nurse, right? I don't want someone who can fully leverage the power of that library for all the students. All the information that was disseminated out to the public on the Right Sizing the Budget page, it seemed to all focus on full-time employees and head counts and things like that, but I failed to see anything on there about how services would be affected, how that would impact the burden on teachers, what would be put on teachers then, and also student outcomes. We had some comments here about socioeconomic backgrounds and lower income families. The school library is a sanctuary, it's a place where kids who don't have books at home can get their books, it's where they can find a love of reading, it's where they can begin the journey to be someone who gets fulfillment beyond, or from the written page. So I think beyond that, my questions are around, if you haven't already, or if you could, do some digging about how would the services be affected, what are the possible student outcomes at each level? I know I focus, I have kids in elementary school at Papa Bridge, kindergarten, second grade, I'll have another in a couple of years, so I focused on that, but the cuts in middle school and high school are similarly, I'm concerned about those as well. And then finally, just a question about communication on this. You've talked about, this has been an ongoing issue, drawing from reserves, cuts to ESC and continue like that. I guess I'm curious, and maybe it's going to be addressed and followed communication to me or put out to the public. Since I first heard about it to when the vote is scheduled, that's 40 days. And if this has been going on for four years of drawing from reserves and making cuts, we care. I mean, I would have loved to know four years ago, to get out there and knock on doors and whatever we need to do. I understand budget cuts are reality, I understand all this, I know there will be cuts. I'm just here to speak up for the media centers in the district. So, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite Derek Lindstrom to the podium.
Madam Chairperson, board members, my name is Dr. Derek Lindstrom, I live in 10256 Scarborough Circle. I am a academic dean at Minneapolis College. I have half of my six years in that role supervise the library, and I will tell you that when I moved into this district, one of the most important things about this school district was the strength of the media centers and the ways in which the media centers support our students. If I wanted to go to a school district that only had one media director, we could have gone right down the road to Eden Prairie. I think it is disappointing at best to read the FAQ information claiming that the media centers will be fully operational. We know that as Derek, the other Derek already spoke, libraries are more than walls and books, they're about opportunities to teach media literacy skills, research skills. As you can tell from your own data, your standardized test scores have flatlined in the area of reading. If you look at White Bear Lake school districts, which walked through this same process a few years ago and are now restoring these positions, their MCA scores fell. I'd encourage you to think strongly and strategically about the point that Ally also made in terms of equity and inclusion, and how this is going to drastically impact students with the least ability to be successful in this school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'd like to invite Katrina Van Riven.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board and members of the cabinet. Thank you for taking the time to let me address you tonight. I wanted to address you regarding a concern, oh, I'm sorry, I'm a teacher at Valleyview Middle School, and I live in Apple Valley. I wanted to address you tonight regarding a concern about the information shared by the district regarding the right sizing the budget. The district provided a questions and answers section of the website, and in the questions and answers, I was disappointed to see that there was only one mention of failure of the state funding to keep up with the pace of inflation, and there was no mention of the cross subsidy for special education as causes for the budget shortfall. As many of you I'm sure know, 59 districts in 2018 faced budget shortfalls based on similar factors. Instead, the information provided mentions over five times money paid to staff, whether it be staff salaries or benefits. For many teachers, this is incredibly demoralizing and leaves teachers feeling disillusioned and unvalued. In addition, it makes it difficult for members of our community and for other staff members to advocate at the state level and with their elected representatives for more funding for schools, which puts this in danger of becoming a reoccurring problem if the state funding and the cross subsidy for special education isn't addressed by the state. So what I ask you is that perhaps we could provide more detailed information to staff, teachers and families and the community to allow them to join us in advocacy to ensure this is not a reoccurring issue. Other districts such as District 196 and District 191 have provided a lot of information about the budget shortfalls and the lack of the state funding keeping pace with inflation, and so I believe that Bloomington can do that for our citizens as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for sharing your comments and concerns with the school board, we appreciate your feedback. And again, I know, you all know, but we invite for the public's information, we invite you to visit our Right Sizing the Budget webpage on the district's website for more information, and a feedback form if you wish to leave a question, comment or concern. We do have some further study sessions coming up, there'll be one, I believe, this Wednesday and next Monday. So you can come and hear the actual presentations or discussions at that time. So thank you for your attendance tonight. That brings us to Part A.
Are there any students?
Oh, I don't believe, are there any students in the audience? No, thank you.
You need a motion for Part A?
Please.
So moved?
Second.
Part A includes our board business and field trips, grants and contracts and finances. All in favor of Part A, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Brings us right to Part B, with committed funds. Would someone like to move that?
I'm sure.
Please.
All right, make sure I have the right one here. Be resolved, the school board of Independent School District 271 approves committed funds in the areas specified as follows. Committed funds, one, $131,265 for wellness dollars. Two, $113,783 for band uniform and instrument replacement. Three, $245,315 for athletics and activities. Four, $161,193 for staff development. Five, $826,593 for site department carryover funds.
Our Executive Director of Finance is here, Brad Zivkovich, to address this.
Chair Barlata, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members, this is the start of the audit process. You'll get a report from our auditors tonight. What we need is these resolutions, first three resolutions here, to finalize pieces that are in the audit for approval. What you're seeing with these committed funds are funds that the board has set aside for different groups within the district to be able to carry over funds from year to year.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, we have a resolution regarding assigned funds. Someone like to move that?
Madam Chair.
Please.
Be resolved, the school board of Independent School District 271 approves assigned funds in the area specified as follow. Assigned funds, number one, $10.35 QCOM collaborative.
I don't think it's $10.
There's a missing zero.
It's a missing zero?
Nope.
It is $10?
Yes.
I actually called ahead, just to make sure.
What this is, is that Kelly Spees and her team of collaborative around the metro area have a QCOM collaborative. And what they do is they have conferences and the rest, and we checked with our auditors regarding this type of program where individual districts will put in, similar to when you pay for a conference. So what they do is, over time, they will provide dollars for a conference, we'll be the fiscal host of that, make the payments and that, and then whatsoever left over is left in this fund. The auditors recommended that we have to have it as being an assigned fund, so that the board approves it and the board is aware of these transactions.
Was there a second on that? I didn't hear either.
I don't have one noted.
Second. Thank you, done. All right, just thanks for straining that out for us. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution regarding assigned funds, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Next, we have the operating transfer, community service and internal service funds. Would someone like to move that resolution? Please, Director Bennett.
Be resolved, the school board of Independent School District 271 approves the operating transfers of $377,215 in the general funds to certain programs in the community service fund for fiscal year 2018-2019.
Thank you.
This is also a audit transaction that we do every year. It is for payments of programs that are being run in community ed that have some general fund expenditures tied to them. So it's making that transfer from one fund to the other.
Thank you. Any questions?
Is this kind of an annual?
Yes.
Transaction that goes on? Correct, price is different, thank you.
Director Bennett?
Could you just elaborate a little bit of which programs those might be?
It's the utility, the majority of it is the utility and the usage of Pond and Southwood.
Okay, and what would happen if we didn't transfer this money over and we just paid for it out of community ed funds? Is that something we're allowed to do, or are we forbidden from doing that, or?
I would have to look into those type of costs, because they are community ed, it can only pay for community ed programming.
Okay. So is that, some of this funds is not community ed programming, is what you're saying? So we would have to transfer it? We don't have any option under the law, we have to do this, or?
These are costs that are directly toward that general fund cost that we're being charged to community ed, that we need to transfer revenue over to community ed to pay for it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Brings us to acceptance of the audit report, 2018-19.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson and members of the board.
Can we just quick read the resolution? Please, thank you, sorry.
Be resolved, the school board of Independent School District 271 accepts the auditors' reports from Bergen KDV Limited, which includes the audited financial statements, audited financial statements of the student activity accounts, and accompanying communication letters for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. No, please.
Tonight I have Andrew Grace from Bergen KDV, he's the audit manager for that, he's been working on our audit for what? He's been working on our audit for what, at least last six years, six or seven years? He is here tonight to present the findings of the financials for the eighteen-nineteen school year.
Thank you. Again, thank you, Madam Chair, person, and members of the Board for having me here tonight. Again, here to present the financial statement audit results for June 30th, 2019. To start things off, it's important to note what the responsibilities of us as your auditor are and then also the responsibilities of management. It is management's responsibility at the district to prepare the financial statements. That's cutting the checks, making payroll, recording the activity and reconciling the balances, and recording that activity on your financial statements at the end of the year. It's our job as your auditors to come in, test, examine, and look at that underlying supporting documentation, ultimately give an opinion on those financial statements so that we can ensure that they are materially correct and so that the public can also be assured that they are materially correct. I'd happy to report our independent auditor's report on the financial statements that we have issued an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion on the financial statements. And that's the best opinion that we can offer on the financial statements. We're also issuing a report on government auditing standards. And this includes our consideration of internal control and also includes some consideration of compliance. And we did have one material weakness this year. Whenever we make an adjustment to the books on, or an adjustment to the general ledger that's over a certain threshold, we do have to recognize that in that report. We also issue a report on federal programs. Whenever there's federal expenditures that exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a single audit or a program-specific audit is required. That's something that occurs annually at the district and happy to report that we had no findings on compliance and also no findings related to internal control over federal programs. And lastly, we're also required to report on Minnesota legal compliance. The Office of the State Auditor has us look at contracts and bids, dispersments, potential conflicts of interest, indebtedness, several other miscellaneous provisions as well. And happy to report that we have no findings as it relates to Minnesota legal compliance. Now, when it comes to the different responsibilities, the Board also has a responsibility to adopt a budget and to monitor that budget. And that budget originally called for a hundred and fifty-four million dollars in revenues, just over a hundred and fifty-seven million dollars in expenditures, and after transfers out called for a decrease in fund balance of just over three point four million dollars. That budget was amended during the year, increased revenues slightly to just over a hundred and fifty-five million dollars, increased expenditures to a hundred and sixty million dollars, and after transfers out called for a decrease in fund balance of just over five million dollars. Administration carried out that budget during the year and did perform well in relation to the budget. And revenues came in at a hundred and sixty-one point two, or five, five point seven million dollars over budget for the year. Majority of that occurring in state sources. Special education revenue came in higher than anticipated. Then also the maintenance-related levy was required to be recorded in the general fund in accordance with UFRS or MDE requirements for 2019. So that's why you're seeing one point eight million dollars being over budget on local property taxes and also in turn having about a two percent variance on expenditures or three point two million dollars being over budget for total expenditures. You can see about one point two million of that in capital outlay and one point nine million in sites and buildings. And that all relates to that maintenance-related levies that were now being recorded in the general fund. You can also see a variance in regular instruction of just under one point seven million. And again, this is due to the increase in enrollment and special, and also other educational costs being slightly over budget. At the end, you can see that fund balance decreased by just over two point seven million dollars, where the budget called for a five million dollar decrease, so performed through about two point three million dollars better than anticipated. Now, to help understand the budget and the revenue, different revenue streams, obviously enrollment plays an important factor in the state sources of revenue, which is the majority of the district's revenue. And looking at this chart here, this shows the total resident ADM for the past five years. Now, these are the students that are within the district boundaries. And you can see it's been relatively stable, increased slightly in 2019 by about a hundred and seventeen ADM. This next chart here just shows that in a bar graph format, with the gray bar being kindergarten and other, the blue elementary, and the green bar secondary. And when the state calculates the state sources of revenue and the general education aid, they convert those numbers to pupil units. And that requires that the weighting factors be used, and the secondary students do get a twenty percent premium for general education aid. Another component of the formula for general education aid is the open enrollment process. And so the bottom chart that you're seeing there is showing the top line, which is your residents, after taking into account the weighting factors for the past five years. But it also includes residents going elsewhere and non-residents coming in. And in 2015, that was the lowest point for open enrollment loss. So there was an open enrollment loss of about two hundred, two hundred and ninety-two in 2015, and that loss has grown to eight hundred and twenty in 2019, which is the largest in the years presented there. And that, that's a result of the open enrollment process and also a growing number of students attending charter schools. This next chart also shows the same information, just in bar graph format, but this next chart shows the percentage change from year to year. And in 2015, you're seeing a large decrease in the WADOM or the weighted average daily membership served. That was the year that the weighting factors had changed at MDE. So that's a, that's an inflated number there. But you can see annually about a one percent increase from year to year in the, both the pupil unit number and also the resident ADM number. The next chart shows the general fund sources of revenue for the last five years. And the total general fund revenues of a hundred and sixty-one million dollars increased twelve million, three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, or eight point three percent from 2018 to 2019. And over the five-year period, increased about twenty-seven million, or nineteen point seven percent. State revenue, which is the largest portion of the district's revenues, at sixty-seven point four percent, increased four point three million dollars, due primarily due to enrollment, increase in formula allowance, and also special education aid. The local property tax line increased about seven point five million dollars. And again, that's due to the facilities-related levies now being recorded in the general fund as required by MDE. Next chart shows general fund expenditures for the last five years. And in total, expenditures increased by eleven point three million dollars, or seven point four percent. You can see school and district administration has remained relatively flat over the last five years, along with district support services. The instructional categories, which include regular instruction, special education instruction, also vocational instruction, increased to a hundred and nine, or just under a hundred and ten million dollars in 2019. Instructional support and pupil support were consistent from year to year. And then you can see the sites, buildings, equipment, and other category increasing significantly. Again, that's due to the facilities-related costs now being recorded in the general fund. This next chart shows expenditures per ADM served for the last five years. And this is to give some context, to give you some, to give you some historical perspective on these numbers for the last five years for the district itself, and then also providing the statewide average there at the bottom. There's various factors. Obviously, this is all based on revenues, which can vary greatly from, from district to district, but just to provide some perspective on these numbers to get an idea of what, what those numbers look like from a per ADM basis. Next is a pie graph of the general fund expenditure for 2019. And this has looked very similar for the last several years. Sixty-seven percent of general fund expenditures making it into the instructional category with the, with the facilities-related costs now being recorded in the general fund, the sites and buildings, a slightly higher this year, but fairly consistent with prior years. The next chart shows general fund operations for the last five years. And from 2018 to 2019, we had an increase in revenues of eight point three percent, an increase in expenditures of seven point four percent, and ultimately ended with a decrease in fund balance of two point three million dollars. This includes all the programs of the general fund, including any restricted or categorical programs, including alternative programs, operating capital. But in addition to normal 2019 operating activities, the general fund also recorded transfers out to the food service fund and the community service fund of three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, and ended the year with a fund balance of twenty-two million, six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Now, it's important to look at the different components of fund balance. So we have total fund balance at twenty-two million, six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, but that is made up of various different categories. One being non-spendable items, also restricted items, that, those are those categorical or restricted programs from MDE that I had mentioned. Operating capital having three point three million dollars, excuse me, capital projects levy having three point three million dollars, operating capital just over six million dollars. Also have several commitments from the Board represented here, and then unassigned fund balance at the end of the year of ten million, seventy-eight thousand dollars. Now, the Board does have a policy in place for unassigned fund balance to be maintained between five and eight percent of annual expenditures. And that ten million dollars at the end of the year equates to six percent of annual expenditure, so right in line with the district's budget at the end of the year. One thing to point out, you're seeing that transportation line changing significantly from 2017 to 2018. Just wanted to point out that that number is now being represented in that unassigned balance for 2018 and 2019. This next chart shows the general fund financial position, which includes total fund balance and also the cash and investment balances. Now, these will correlate from year to year and vary from year to year based on what you approve for budget and what the operations end for the year. And because we had a decrease in fund balance, you're seeing both those lines decrease in 2019. But the state uses a different metric when measuring financial health of a district, and they use the term unrestricted fund balance. So this would include both unassigned, assigned fund balances, and the non-spendable fund balance that you have. This would exclude any restricted fund balance. And there was a time over the past ten years or so where the district's fund balance was closer to the thirty percent threshold. And you can see year after year, fund balance has decreased to the lowest point in the five years presented, ending the year in 2019 at nine point four percent. But again, the, the policy of the, of the Board is to maintain unassigned between that five and eight percent, and you're still will within that, within that threshold. The next chart shows long-term debt for the last five years. And the net change in net long-term debt is seven point three million dollars. That's due to a issuance during the 2019 year of twenty-four million dollars for facilities maintenance, then also having just over seven million dollars in debt payments during the year, with that net increase going from a hundred and twenty-two or a hundred and twenty-three million up to about a hundred and forty million in 2019. This next chart shows total debt and also net long-term debt, the same, just in a line graph format. And the next chart shows tax levies and tax capacity rates and the different components of the levy for the last five years. In total, the levy has increased from fifty-seven million to fifty-nine million in the 2019. The bottom chart shows the different levy rates for each of those different components. The next chart here shows the tax capacity rate being at the lowest point in the five years presented at twenty point one percent. And the reason for this is due to the increase in market value. So you can see that green bar, or the green line there at the bottom, we're at the highest point in the five years presented in terms of market values, and you're seeing the lowest referendum tax rate presented there. Also, the operating funds for food service and community service will be reviewed here. And first off, the food service fund had revenues very similar to 2018, just over five million dollars. Expenditures coming in at five, about five point three million dollars, and had a decrease in fund balance of about two hundred thousand dollars, decreasing from nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars down to eight hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in 2019. Next is the community service fund. And for the first time in the five years presented, you did have a, or in the last four years, did have a decrease in fund balance of four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Similar to the general fund, the community service fund does have several restrictions related to the different programs that are being offered in this fund. So even though there was a spend-down, there are restrictions on the different types of programs that do operate within this fund. Currently, community education has three point four million restricted for that particular program, adult basic education at nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, early childhood and family education at seven hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, and then school readiness at two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars at the end of the year. So that's a summary of the financial results for the, for the June 30th, 2019 audit, and then wanted to also open it up for any questions.
Well, first of all, thank you for all that. It's always interesting to hear these numbers. I want to ask you a, well, hopefully it's not a hypothetical number to ask somebody who's involved in financing. If the Board is considering somewhere down the road, changing the, the policy between five and eight percent, let's say we're, we would consider lowering it to two and a half, or three. What if any issues may arise with having a fund balance at two and a half percent? What could we look forward to?
So, so right now, we're, we're in a, we're operating in a cash environment to where we're getting ninety percent of the aids from the state by the end of the year. So ten percent of the state aids that you have are always going to be in a receivable balance at the end of the year. Now, there was a time when things weren't so good at the state level to where they were holding back twenty, twenty-five percent by the end of the year, to the point where it's really putting a drain on the available cash balances that you have. And if it gets to that point again in the future, it could mean that you would have to borrow to meet your cash flow needs. So that, the, the current threshold is at, is at a spot to where it'll keep you, keep, keep you ready to absorb any shocks that might come along the way in terms, in terms of unexpected expenditures or any changes that might occur at the state level that might affect that cash balance in the future. So it's, it's something that can be considered, but it all depends on the changing environment that we're, that we're operating in.
Thank you.
While we're on that, can you share with us other districts, fund balances, and some of them have to borrow?
Yes, that is correct. It's, some have the, have a similar policy but have not been able to adhere to the policy due to certain pressures and certain circumstances at particular districts. But one of those previous pages did, did show the, the state average in, in the unrestricted fund balance percentage. But there are, there are a number of districts that are getting into that situation to where the fund balance isn't sufficient to, to provide cash flow for operational purposes.
Well, while we're at the, the fund balance conversation, other than not being able to pay our bills if they start holding back money, what other, I don't know, should we be cautioned about if we have too low of a fund balance? And does it affect our, our credit rating or anything like, along those lines? Or?
I would not.
They're not.
I'll grab that one. Yes, it will. Already our credit rating with, where you see, if we go back, if you want to go back to that page with the, the fund balances when we're at, where's, yeah, I think that was the one right there. When you look at when we were back in the timeframe of 2015, even before that, our credit rating has dropped a whole level because we used to be a double A plus, and then we moved down to a double A. So the, every time we go out for selling bonds and that, that is one of the things that they've talked to us about, is our fund balance keeps dropping. And so it becomes the fact of, because we're not a growing district in the way of like a Yzetta or some of the other in the western suburbs that are growing, they look at us and say that it, you're not growing, so if you don't have any reserves in that, you're more of a risk of being able to borrow money than a district that has twenty to thirty percent in fund balance.
Thank you. And then while I got Rod on the mic there, I got a question for you. Since we just learned that we did two million dollars better than anticipated, how does that affect when we're looking at Right Sizing the Budget? How does that affect the, the target number of reductions?
As you'll see from the next presentation on the budget update, it, originally when we were talking about budget reductions, we were talking about five million dollars. That's why we reduced it down to three point five million dollars was because of the betterment of this year.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none. All in favor of this resolution? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
None. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
That brings us to the 2019-2020 budget. That brings us to the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget, mid-year budget adjustments. I want you to make that resolution. Please.
To resolve the School Board of Independent School District two seventy-one approves adjusting the two thousand nineteen, twenty budget for all funds by increasing revenues by one million, two hundred, three thousand, five hundred, sixty-nine dollars and decreasing expenditures by one million, two hundred, forty-one thousand, six hundred, sixty-five dollars.
Second.
Thank you.
So the board is dealing with tonight is three different school years. We just got done with the eighteen, nineteen and finalizing the financials from there. We're now updating the nineteen, twenty budget, and the next resolution will be the board approving the levy for the two thousand twenty-one budget. So this is a full night of looking at the three years that we kind of deal with during this time, of dealing with three years of our financials all at the same time. So if we look at what this presentation is to prepare the board to make an informed decision about the proposed revised budget for nineteen, twenty, the board, we do need action from the board tonight. The overall reason for this is the proposed budget adjustments tonight is we have changes, as you've heard with the audit, the audit turned out better so that we, we have a updated fund balance number, we have enrollment numbers from the October one, and then we look at any legislative or financial data that was updated since we did the budget back in last As I mentioned, prior carryover, any updated information, any additional revenues than any other categories that we see. So just kind of looking at our overall funds, we have our capital and deferred maintenance fund, which is our operating capital, our old facilities, deferred maintenance, any kind of construction, and then our technology and security. We have debt service, we have insurance and internal services, which is our self-insurance of both dental and medical, our OPEB trust for our severance, our internal service for vacation and other severances, and then our other operating funds. And you'll see a new one on their agencies. We were required to start in nineteen, twenty, that funds for student activity funds that used to be separate and also BECTV that used to have a separate fund of themselves, that now is considered under the general fund. We're breaking it out here, but as you'll see in the audit next year, those results of those funds will be in the general fund presentation by the auditors next year. That's all included in Fund One. We're breaking it out here because we, we try to make the general fund transportation the pure, which is the, what ties to the board policy of the five to eight percent. So if we look at operating capital, the audit came in, we started the year at six point eight million dollars. We had a projected spend down. We did spend down one point four million to have a ending five, fund balance of five point four million dollars. If you carry that forward, you can kind of see that our expenditure or our, our fund balance was a little higher than what we expected. We thought it was going to be at four point eight. It came in at five point four. Part of it is, as you can see from the expenditure line there, that there were just some projects in that that didn't get completed in eighteen, nineteen that were moved to nineteen, twenty. The projected for nineteen, twenty is a spend down of an additional seven hundred and forty thousand dollars for an ending fund balance in our capital projects or operating capital of four point seven million dollars. All facilities, looking at the overall, we started the year at nine point eight million dollars. We sold bonds this last year, so we have a ending fund balance of twenty-one million dollars that taking care of projects for over the next couple of years. So if you look at what we did with, with capital, with all facilities actually, is we actually did some more projects than we expected to do in eighteen, nineteen. And so that made it so that we have less in nineteen, twenty project. This is a unique year with all facilities because this is the first time we've done year-round major project like we're doing at Valley View Middle. So it's there's, you see some of that, that carryover aspect that was larger than we Capital projects levy, which is our technology and security. Here again, we were, we had a beginning fund balance of four point three million dollars. We expected it to end at the two point five million. We came in a little better, so we have a ending fund balance of three point three million dollars. Carrying that forward, we're still showing a fund balance at the end of the eighteen, nineteen, twenty school year of just under two million dollars in that area. And some of that is just we're finishing up this last year in nineteen, twenty of the video cameras at all the sites and getting some of those last things, and then also working on our two-way radio project that should be implemented sometime this year. The debt service, which is our principal interest on our bonds, as you can see here from what we were projecting for an ending fund balance to where we are, very slight difference. Our fund balance was just a little better than what we expected from this year. Part of that is that interest rates that we're able to invest with are a little bit stronger than they've been in the past, so we're seeing a little more on some of these funds of additional interest revenue. Self-insured dental, not really any much of a change here. We were expecting again a one point two million dollar ending fund balance. We ended at about a one point two, just a little bit better. We just see no change really in our projected of our revenue and expenditures, showing that our ending fund balance for dental at the end of nineteen, twenty will be just under one point one million dollars. Self-insured medical, here's one where you can see that we've had another good year in eighteen, nineteen in our self-insured medical, where we were expecting to come with a ending fund balance of eleven million dollars. It actually came in at fourteen million dollars. We've, we've strengthened this fund by the great work of both the units and administration and the insurance committee of building up a fund balance there. That's why we've been able to for the last couple of years of having a one percent increase in our premiums versus double digits or even high single-digit increases. This is, has built this. The projected change of revenue and expenditures is just lighting it more up to what we saw as actuals this year and projecting those forward. Our OPEB trust, this is the trust that we set up back in two thousand nine to be able to handle our severance payments out into the future where a lot of districts have to pay for these expenditures through their general fund. We're able to pay for these, as you look at it, close to a million dollars a year worth of expenditures that would be hitting the, the general fund are hitting this fund instead. So what we're showing here is we came in a little better than what we projected, about four hundred thousand dollars, showing that we're going to end this year at just under thirteen million dollars. This thirteen million dollars covers what we have projected for the future for payments. So it's not, we're not falling behind. We're being able to, to keep our pace over time with what we bonded for back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. The debt on those bonds, if you remember, we refinanced them last year. That's why you see a, kind of a drop down. Overall, last year, we took the savings in the first year going out forward. This is again, is if you remember with our debt, we're required to levy for a hundred and five percent, and then the state kind of takes it back over time. What we're seeing this year is some of that take back of, some of that extra five percent. Internal service fund, kind of see that pretty much a wash this last year. We were projecting to use some of this fund this current year based on the expenditures and the rest and what we've allocated within the trust. We no longer need the a hundred and fifty thousand dollars at this point in time for this year. Food service, food service overall fund was a spend down of a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. So we were pretty close to, to budget. If you look at it, it was eight hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars versus eight hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. This is with all the, the snow days last year. I mean, I think we, we came in pretty close to expectation with all the, with, with the snow days still happening. Looking at, moving forward for this next year, we're showing a break even. One of the challenges with the food service fund right now is we're getting very close to board policy for fund balance for the food service fund. It's, it's, it's in our budgeting policy. It's not in the, the fund balance policy. It's in the budgeting policy. It's something that the board, we'll probably have a conversation with the board over the next year before we, we finalize budgets of possibly changing the fund balance goal for food, for food service. Community services fund showing as Andrew talked about, it's a small spend down this year to the five point three million dollars fund balance, actually fairly close to what we, we were budgeting for this fund, showing the spend down, a big chunk of the spend down this year of the three hundred and, three hundred and ninety-four thousand projected, now four hundred and thirty-three, is remembering the board approved an additional overhead adjustment for utilities and the rest for programming within community ed of about three hundred thousand dollars last year to help out this current year's budgets reductions. The agent funds, this is what we talked about, is the, the funds that were co-mingling with student activities and then also the BECTV. Their ending fund balance on the audit right now is six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. We're just carrying that forward, and then the budget for them for the next year of revenue and expenditures is a spend down of about fifty-seven hundred bucks. The general fund, looking at it, as you can kind of see, we started with coming into the year at ten million dollars. Overall, revenue expenditures were fairly flat. We used some of restricted funds this year. Part of it was with the restricted, we used some of the athletic restricted money for some of the upgrades in the auditoriums, both at the high schools and the elementaries, I mean, middle schools. So overall, the net impact was that we added an additional fifty-six thousand dollars to fund balance between, between years. So if you carry that forward, the additional amount to the ten seventy-eight, we're projecting a spend down of one point one million dollars this year, so fund balance will end at eight point nine million dollars or six percent. Questions?
So looking forward with changing the fund balance for the school lunch, how would that like affect school lunches?
It wouldn't upset school lunches at all. What it would do is just it's, it's saying that the, as the board talked about before, with the general fund, it would just have less cash flow for that. It would just say that we wouldn't have to look at either general fund or another fund to help support food service if they go below that, if the board doesn't change the fund balance policy.
Thank you.
Director Saram?
Yeah, I was just going to say, wow. You know, I've been through this so many times before, but it just is always interesting, the number of groups that we have, categories that we, that we fall under. Now, all of a sudden, there's a new agency funds. We've always talked about transportation, and we've been always curious about BECTV because that was an independent franchise, cable franchise, and now that they're coming, going to be a part of what, the general fund or just a separate agency?
They, they have still the independency that they've always had.
Yeah.
All it is, is that the new GASBY regulations are requiring the board to have sign off on decision-making that they're doing. They, it's, it's under your control.
So as we heard from Bergen too, with, within this, we're kind of stuck, stuck with what GASBY is doing, what the state is doing, what some of the feds are doing to our whole operation. And so we have to always be aware of what's coming on there, and that's why fund balances is so important because who knows what will happen, you know, with the federal administration and state, you know, coming up with some way that we're, we're going to wind up being victimized again as we have over the years so many times before. But I just want to thank you for putting this all together in a fairly readable and understandable presentation.
Anybody else?
Thank you. I'd just like to share is the, the finding that the, and Andrew didn't mention it, the finding that they did have was more dealing with where, where Andrew was mentioning about the deferred maintenance pay-as-you-go levy that used to always be in all facilities, moved into the general fund, and we didn't move it there until later in the process after the audit was on its way. And so that was one of the, that was the finding of, of what it was, is we just didn't classify it in the right area.
That's would be a significant material finding, yeah.
Anyone else? Any other questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. One more, final two thousand nineteen payable, twenty twenty property tax levy. Should, how, would someone read the resolution?
Madam Chair.
Please.
Resolve that the School Board of Independent School District two seventy-one approves the proposed final property tax levy for the two thousand nineteen payable, twenty twenty levy of sixty-one million, seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Be it further resolved that in the event of any changes to levy amounts by the Minnesota Department of Education, it is the intent of the School Board of Independent School District two seventy-one to levy the appropriate amount as allowed by law.
Thank you.
This is a process that by law, we need to have a truth and taxation hearing tonight. About five or six years ago, they kind of combined both the truth and taxation and the update of the budget to be on the same night. So I think that this is kind of a combination of both. This process holds that once the presentation is over, I'll turn it back over to the board chair to ask anybody in the public that would like to have comments about the levy, have their opportunity as part of the truth and taxation process. So the objective of tonight is to inform the board on the final levy certification. We need action on it tonight, and also we need to do the two parts of the truth and taxation process, and then the update of the pay twenty levy information. So back in September, MDE provided us the first round of, of data. On the twenty-third, we brought it to the board for their preliminary levy certification. We needed to by September thirtieth, get it to the county so that they could provide estimates to the taxpayers. That went out in November, and then tonight is the final submission and approval to send to the state to do final tax levy information for the year. So if we look at the current budget, as we talked about, grabbing the categories together similar to what is in the audit. So we have the general fund, which now includes transportation, technology, capital projects levy, the, all capital funds in that. That's all in that one, food service, community ed, building, construction fund, and then debt service. So if you look at our, our total of all our funds together, we have revenue for the nineteen, twenty budget of one, a hundred and ninety-four million dollars, expenditures of two hundred and twenty million dollars, or a spend down of twenty-six point three million dollars. As you saw in the last presentation, the majority- As you saw in the last presentation, the majority of that spend down is the old facility project that's going on at Valley View Middle. If you look at just the General Fund itself, it's showing the General Fund of a hundred and sixty-three point seven million dollars. Ex- uh, the expenditures of a one sixty-six, showing a spend down of two point seven million dollars. If you see the basic General Fund that we talked about was going down one point one, so everything else is going down about one point six. Excuse me. So looking at sources of revenue, if we look at as a total of the hundred and ninety-four million dollars, what we received from the state is fifty-eight percent, from the feds, three percent, property taxes thirty-one, six percent from fees, and then food service for both state, local, and all the rest is three percent. What's included in the state is the formula revenue, special education, English learner revenue, all the different, different copies of, of revenue. In your property taxes, you have your operating referendum, debt service levies, career tech, community ed, all the different categories there. Federal, both special ed and titles. And then your fees, which is any tuition rental that the district does. And as I mentioned, the food services, your state, local, and your federal dollars. If we just look at the General Fund, how the revenue is broken down, you can kind of see the state grows a little bit here with sixty-six percent. What it is, is as we know, community ed is driven heavily by fees. So that's why the fees go down from six percent down to three percent. And you see the, the increase in the state aid and the property taxes. If we look at expenditures, looking at overall expenditures of all, when you look at instructional support, you're looking at the assistant superintendent, the media centers, any staff development, counseling, curriculum specialists, pupil support, you're looking at the health services, social workers, transportation, and food service, buildings and grounds, all of the different facility ends of there. Our debt service. Our administration would be the superintendent and principals and special ed director. And then your support services for the district are accounting, HR, payroll, and the rest. And you kind of see here with the overall, we're talking regular instruction at thirty-three, thirty-four with vocational and, um, so sixty percent if you look at the total overall budget. If we bring that budget into just the General Fund, you see that increase?
Got it.
That it goes to sixty-seven percent is your instructional, vocational, and special ed instruction. If you add the, the other items that are, are directly tied to the classroom and the rest, you're looking at another eight percent for instructional support services and another nine for pupil support. So if we move on to the actual property taxes themselves, as I mentioned earlier, the district did a preliminary on the thirtieth of September. That goes to the county to prepare their taxes that go out in November. And then tonight is the truth and taxation. Once the board approves that, we resend it to the state and counties and then they provide actual tax statements to the taxpayers after the first of the year. So the categories within the actual levy, there's five categories. Referendum, referendum other, which is equity, community services, debt service, and then all other categories. And as we mentioned before, the school district has an opportunity to either do, uh, whether to levy the maximum or something less than the maximum that is available. So if we look at the referendum itself, the, the referendum based on a per pupil, you're looking at it increased five hundred and sixty-one dol- uh, sixty-one thousand dollars this year. Prior year adjustments, because we're making these decisions eighteen months ahead of time and enrollment and the rest, we have some adjustments. The state also adjusts their inflationary factor. So you can kind of see the adjustment last year was a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. This year is three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. So the net overall for referendum revenue was an increase of seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. If we go with equity and remembering equity is intended to reduce the disparity between revenue, between the highest and lowest revenue districts within a region. So you look at our overall here, small adjustments, it's more of the prior year adjustment where back in pay nineteen, there was a negative adjustment. This year it's a positive adjustment for the overall two hundred and six thousand dollar increase in the equity levy. Community services, looking at the, the overall there, you, we have a very small increase in the top line. Our adjustments are negative, so overall it's a negative amount of just under seven thousand dollars. Debt service, as I mentioned before, is debt service. What we did is we took all the savings in the pay nineteen from refinancing both the, our old facility bonds and also our, excuse me, our OPEC bonds. So you can kind of see the adjustment there is why for the increase of one point one million dollars, to kind of look at the overall increase between the two years of eight hundred and twenty-six thousand. So if we look at our overall, it's showing that last year we had a levy of just over fifty-nine million dollars, increased to just under six, uh, sixty-two million dollars this year, uh, which is a three point nine percent increase in our overall levy between years. Kind of looking at it from a, where we work with the city and the county so we can kind of get an understanding of a medium-sized home, of what the impact is. Showing a medium-sized home was two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars last year. This year it's two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. So about a ten point five percent increase in home value. With all the taxes for both the county, the city, and the school district, it went from thirty-two seventy-one on that medium-sized home to thirty-five ninety-four on a medium-sized home this year, an increase of three hundred and twenty-three dollars or a nine point nine percent increase, so less than the, the value increase. The school districts went from a thousand ten to a thousand ninety-three or eight point three percent. So it's less than the overall increase that the county, the city, and the school district was, as an overall. Next Steps is looking for the board for final approval of the levy for tonight. Remembering, and this does not propose it, remembering it can't be higher than what we proposed back in September. I'll take questions.
Rod, thanks for putting this together and, and holding our hands through the presentation. I had a question on the community service levy. It, it, um, it looks like we're negative in the difference pay-to-pay.
Correct.
The lower right in the final column. Help me understand what that means.
What it means is that because of the adjustments that were made between years or from prior year adjustments, it, it's saying that we're gonna get less levy dollars in this year's budget or in the twenty-twenty-one budget than we received in nineteen twenty.
And so we're, we're down sixty-five, sixty-six hundred dollars?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
And some of that, just to, to clarify, some of that might have been that we got extra money in the past that is sitting in fund balance right now. And then that's offset by the fund balance coming forward.
All right, thank you.
This is a lot of financial information that we get from these three reports, you know. So I should be viewing public in the audience here. I'm here to really see the picture of what the board has to deal with all the time when it comes to making decisions. And we're just grateful we have administration that is handling all of this so well so that we don't have to just totally question ourselves to death with all the little stuff that goes on. Because we've been, we've been brought up to speed over various study sessions and meetings over the past year so that in summary, all of this information is right there for us. Thank you so much for doing this and really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
And is this the time that we ask for a public comment? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this issue? Now's the time. Seeing no one come forward, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more.
Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District two seventy-one accepts the World's Best Workforce Annual Report for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year.
Thank you. Our Director of Community Relations is here to discuss this.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Fujitaki, we're back here with you again this year to share with you the final draft of the World's Best Workforce Annual Report. This is a special issue of School Pages. We went to this format a number of years ago. Just to be clear, what you heard earlier this evening from Dr. Heistat and a number of other administrative personnel and district staff was the state-required World's Best Workforce content that is part of a more formalized report. We've taken that piece and pulled out a number of pieces of that to create the annual report that is no longer required by the state but is one we feel provides information to our community and to our staff members around our achievement areas. Several years ago, the board asked for a final review before it is printed. So what you received and what is on the screen for the audience here this evening and also watching is a PDF of what that will look like if there are no changes to be made and will be printed and go out. Within that, as you also see, the Pathways Advisory Committee under the direction of Mr. Kubis and Ms. Jens and others, they do review some of the content related to the World's Best Workforce goals, but more specifically, um, on the back page, which would be page four, is the curriculum review cycle that ensures continuous improvement. So what you have in front of you and what we're asking tonight is approval from the board to move forward with the printing of this annual report to go out to all of our residents.
Do we have any questions, comments?
Madam Chair. Um, just a real quick word of thanks to the team that put this together. I think it's digestible. And I know it's not an easy thing to, to condense the report, the early report that we got into something like this. And I appreciate the energy and the effort that was put into this.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Please.
No, just, um, just a quick comment regarding how you made the distribution of the demographics of our student population. I, I like the way that you did it this year versus last year. I think it explains it a lot more and lets us see more, you know, what, what the exact number is or numbers around the difference in between groups of students. And also, um, you know, just to highlight how amazing it is that we have so well-prepared teachers in our school district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, hearing no further comments, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to board member reports. Before we begin, I would like to have a motion to establish a closed session upon the conclusion of tonight's board meeting. This meeting will be closed as permitted by section thirteen D point zero-three to discuss district's labor negotiation strategy related to the district's negotiations with all bargaining groups. Someone like to move that resolution?
Moved.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, thank you. All right, board member reports.
Madam Chair. I'm, I'm smiling when I say this one. I had the opportunity to go to Kennedy on Friday for lunch and then the, the holiday concert. The reason I'm smiling is because I kept messing up, what they serve for lunch was Mad Mike's Pizza Bites?
Wild Mikes.
Wild Mikes, there you go. But, so I kept, I kept complaining to them, thinking it was Mad Mikes, and I'm told that that's something completely different. Anyways, it was Wild Mikes Pizza Bites and, and the fantastic salad, some fresh veggies, and great conversation. And then I snuck over to the, um, the senior, the, the afternoon, the early show of the, of the holiday concert, and that was fantastic. They had elementary classes in there as well as some seniors who, who come for the afternoon. And I knew a bunch of the elementary kids, so they were, they, uh, one of the questions they asked me was, how come everyone is so big? So I spent a little bit of time explaining why, why the students are, are, look like grownups and yet they're still students. But it was a lot of fun interacting with the, the students and staff and I thought the kids did a fantastic job. And our very own Ellie Starks was singing a solo up there. So she knocked it out of the park. It was, it was a lot of fun to see that and it was a pleasure to attend. Uh, thanks, and I'll hang up and listen.
And she went incognito with straight hair. I almost didn't.
Yeah.
Who else? Who, go ahead.
Let me just follow up on that too because I was there also and I just wanted, camera can get a good shot of this. On the back side lists at least two hundred kids that are in the choirs over at Kennedy and Valley View, Valley View Voices, and we know that the Valley View Middle School is a staging area for going into Kennedy Choirs, but now they have the elementary school doing musicals too. So it's got a great campus structure on here, but I've been to, I don't know, a hundred of them over at times, but I've never seen a back page that is so full of the number of kids that participate in the show. It's just a real tribute to the program over there and the leadership of the choir directors and the students in making that holiday show one of the best. And I, you meet a lot of the seniors that come out, or they're senior citizens that come out afterwards and they said, oh yeah, this is my thirtieth year and so on and so forth like that. So it's just a tradition that's going on well. So I just wanted to add that.
Just really quickly, the PTSA met last week and the main topic was, of course, rightsizing the budget conversation. And Superintendent Fujitaki and other cabinet members and other staff were there to do the presentation and answer questions. So it was a good conversation, a lot of questions were answered. And I also was at the holiday show to see Ellie, so it was great. I was a little concerned when, when Director Saram's sharing down there the, the number of students there, I was a little concerned they were gonna come off the stage because the stage was so full that, that they could barely all fit on there, so, thank you.
So I attended the Old Grove Middle School Band, the show. So that included the jazz band, so that was, was an amazing performance. We got, my husband and I got to see the six, seven, and eight graders playing and just, um, you know, highlight the great job that our music teachers do at the, at our schools and especially to Mr. Biggs, pretty amazing job done that night with the students. I also, um, well, with Director Bibi and Chair Baralata, we were at the MSBA Delegate Assembly this past weekend, Friday and Saturday. There were a total of twenty-eight resolutions, I believe it was twenty-eight, that were presented to the, to about a hundred and twenty board members that were present from different areas of Minnesota. All resolutions that had been recommended were approved and the ones not recommended, not, none of them were approved, they were all not approved. So very interesting couple of days. We heard a lot of, uh, very informative, informative. We heard a lot of very informative information, and that's another reminder for us, school board members, of the many needs in different areas that we have when it comes to finances so that we can continue to advocate for those this coming year, as we see that many of our school districts, including ours, will be struggling with some financial situations. So we need to continue to work together, you know, together as communities, school community, school board members, parents, teachers, administrators, and continue to push at the legislature for the money that we need, our students need. And then finally, had this amazing opportunity of coming, going to Valley View Middle School on Thursday to attend the seventh-grade civics bee. So, you know, I don't know if you have heard of the civics bee, you have heard of the spelling bee before, but the League of Women Voters is in partnership with the school district, and they came up with this great idea of having a civics bee in seventh grade, where all students in seventh grade participated in round number one. And so that, all the kids that were selected after that round came to round number two, that was the one that I attended, and I was invited to be the reader of the questions, the many questions that the League of Women Voters put together. Thankfully, all those questions had an answer there in the format that I was looking, that I was reading, so that I could tell the students, that is correct, or that is not correct, the correct answer is. So that was very, very interesting. I think that was a great idea, and I want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters for bringing this initiative. The kids were very happy. It was wonderful to see the diversity of the students and to see how proud they were of themselves. So now they will move, you know, four students from each of the middle schools came to the second round, at the end of the second round, and all those 12 students will be going to the final round, which is number three, and that will be at Civic Plaza in January. So I'm sure we will be getting the date of when this final round will take place to select the winner.
Thank you. Good. Thank you. Anyone else? Director Bibi?
Well, I really enjoyed being with my colleagues, Maureen and Nellie, at the Minnesota School Board Association Delegate Assembly, hearing concerns that affect schools statewide as well as some that are unique to some of the more outlying areas. And I think it's good for us who live in the metro to realize the differences and talk with some of those people and listen. I think that's the benefit of going, is the networking that takes place and having some excellent conversations, so much on Friday night. I didn't leave until after 11:00. I think it was 11:30 or something, but it was just really a full night that night and a great day the next day. This was my first time doing it. I felt it was educational, just going through the process of reading the resolutions, reading statutes in the law to know what it says right now and what we'd like changed, or even some bills where there's some unintended consequences that affect school districts because of their passing. So it was really excellent. I'm looking forward to doing it next year, hopefully, and I'll miss Maureen not being there, so.
Anyone else? Director Brenner?
Yeah, so being that this is our last business meeting of the year, I just want to take the opportunity, and I know both of you didn't want any type of public comment or anything, but as you know, I'm really not one to follow the rules, so I'm going to do it anyway. This is, we were losing two of our board members. We're losing our Chair Baralata and Vice Chair Bergstrom, and I just wanted to, me personally, I wanted to publicly thank both of you for your commitment to our students and our community and our families, but also on a personal level, thank you for welcoming on the board and always helping me and mentoring me and being a good friend for me. And this has been a great opportunity to serve with you guys, and I'm going to miss both of you guys both very much. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Reports not talking about us, right?
We do want to solve the term in.
Just want to clarify.
Okay. Turn around super now.
Request for four motions. Three are for study sessions. The first study session motion is for December 16th to establish a study session on, at 6:00 PM, to continue discussions on rightsizing the budget.
移到
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of the study session on December 16th? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Another study session for January 6th at 6:00 PM, again, to talk about organizational matters for 2020.
移到
Second?
Second.
All in favor of a study session on January the 6th? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like to have another motion to establish a study session on the same night, on January 6th, but at 7:30 PM, to continue discussions on rightsizing the budget.
移到
Second, thank you. All in favor of a study session following the organization meeting on January 6th? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Okay, and the last motion, establish professional development sessions for the school board. The topic, equity conversations facilitated by Dr. Mitchler. 5:30 PM here in the Educational Services Center. The dates are January 13th, March 9th, and May 11th.
移到
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor of professional development sessions? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those sessions are prior to the regular school board meetings, correct?
Mm-hmm. Any opposed to that?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other business to come before the board tonight? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.